I'd like to call the September 5th meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. We'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation. Please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather this evening, I know all of us continue to hold in our hearts those in Texas and Louisiana who are recovering from the vestiges of flooding and other damage brought about by Hurricane Harvey. Even as we remember the victims of Harvey, we are also aware of another Hurricane Irma, now a category five storm that is approaching the Caribbean and southeastern coast of the United States. Let us keep these folks in our hearts, those who begin the process of rebuilding their lives, and those who find themselves braced for the impact of another potential storm. Let us also remember the first responders from local, state, and federal agencies, and the many hundreds of regular citizens who have helped their neighbors during this time of crisis in our country. Please join me in a moment of silence to remember those who have been lost in this tragedy, and for those who are rebuilding their lives, and for those who are in potential danger of additional dangerous storms facing our country. I would like to read the ethics reminder to the Board of Commission. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by this Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? And does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? As I have when we have addressed this topic previously, I would like to disclose that I work in the solar energy industry. We will be considering the development of a solar farm project on the retired county landfill at the meeting tonight, but none of the businesses that I have an interest in will have any role in the development or installation or operation of this project. And for that reason, I believe I do not have a financial conflict of interest. I'm going to ask the attorney to confirm that.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no others, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all items that come for a vote of the Board this evening. We're now to our public comment period. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you may leave any question along with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is your time to speak to us. The Board reserves the right to deny public address on any subject that's been previously presented to the Board at the same meeting. And before we move on, I want to mention that Kathy Hughes, the county clerk, is at a conference in the western United States today, and for that reason, we have Michael Frue sitting in for Kathy tonight to help us out in that role. Michael, thanks for doing that. All right. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the Commission? Please come up, and Vijay, you can be next.
Thanks for the opportunity to make this address. My wife and I were attracted to buy a previously owned home in Cedarwood by several factors: ideal lot characteristics, wonderfully managed environmental consciousness, long-term residence, and strong and active homeowners board. I am a member of the Board, so I'll be addressing the rezoning request, this before the Board, your Board. The lot characteristics are ideal for our demographic.
For just one moment, we are going to have a public hearing on this. I'll allow you to address the Board, but if you do, then we won't allow additional comment from you during that public hearing, but you're welcome to go ahead and make your comments now if you'd like.
Okay. We were attracted to buy our house for four things: ideal lot characteristics, wonderfully managed environmental consciousness, long-term residence, and strong and active homeowners board. I am a member of that Board. The lot characteristics are ideal for our demographic, geezers. Many of us are quite active in enjoying the outdoor opportunities throughout the county. I am a long-term member of a volunteer trail maintenance crew with the Carolina Mountain Club. We maintain, repair, and build trail sections of the Appalachian Trail, the Mountains to Sea Trail, and other connecting trails that are across our county. I'm also the Leave No Trace Coordinator for the club. I'm telling you all this as background for why I have a concern personally, not just for the community association. My wife and I hike with a couples group across lots of trails all over the Blue Ridge, and even in northern Georgia and east Tennessee. I've ridden my bike across the Blue Ridge Parkway in most of its run through the county. I've ridden it up our community roads. We share a common trait to most of our community: we want to get into the mountains often as quickly as possible, and there's no community like ours with such easy access to them as well as to any other part of the county. Our lots are suited to our lifestyle: very little grass mowing, opting more for tree-based and native shrub flower landscaping. We love how Cedarwood Estates' lot characteristics amplify our home values and our quality of life. The environmental consciousness starts with the Board's concern and management of water. Our terrain is rough in places, so our Board apportions money to ensure we maintain safe rooting and distribution of rainwater from the top lot to the bottom. That includes carefully managing the weathering and aging of our pavements. Three of us are members of the Mountain Club's Thursday Trail Maintenance Crew, and it's gratifying to see how well the work of our Board matches the work of a trail maintenance crew and the knowledge of what damages the pavements or surfaces. We don't permit perimeter fences, and we have not had a problem...
Sir, your three minutes has expired.
Totally expired. May I make one last statement?
Just wrap it up.
Okay. We love our community. Please respect what we've worked so hard to achieve. Don't allow rezoning to R3 and jeopardizing one of Buncombe's real miracles. Thank you.
Thank you. Vijay, and then you can go next. I'm sorry, what? No, I'm sorry, I was speaking to these other folks. And just for clarification on the timing, so the lights are not operational this evening, so Michael will let you know when your three minutes are up. So I'm sorry, maybe can you give a little warning with 30 seconds left?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. My name is Vijay Kapoor, and I live in South Asheville. I'm here on behalf of residents who live along Overlook Road to provide you with an update on the proposed development, and also to invite you all to a town hall meeting with the developer and the public next Wednesday, September 13th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Coontz Intermediate School. As you might know, a new developer has proposed a 98-home subdivision on 25 acres off Overlook Road. We found out about this new application not because the developer or his team told us, but because a resident called the county on a different issue and just had the sense to ask, which didn't do a whole lot for our trust. The developer has told us that he expects the homes to be in the 2,000 to 3,000 square foot range and cost in the low $400,000s depending upon the result of a market study. As designed, the subdivision will require clearcutting 25 acres of forest and its main entrance on a blind curve on Overlook Road directly across from Westridge Road. Because of the terrain, the developer himself stated that he would need to do significant grading, in some places as much as 30 to 35 feet. That's between three and four stories, and we're on the, just to give you some context, we're on the third floor here. Residents are very concerned about traffic, about safety, about the appearance of the proposed development, and about stormwater. Independently, we've had people in the development community review these plans, the development community folks who are usually I'm on the other side of, review these plans, and they've expressed similar concerns. They believe that because of the steep terrain, the grading will be much more difficult than this developer, who is from Greensboro and who hasn't developed anything in Asheville, realizes. This type of subdivision really requires, and you can see it here, it's a bunch of cul-de-sacs, requires land to be flat, which is why we see it a lot in Charlotte and Greensboro, but very little in Asheville. As these developers have told me, there's a reason why this area hasn't been developed yet. I also want to make you aware of some of the frustrations that residents are having. Most of them live in the city of Asheville, where this development, as designed, likely would not be able to be built. The city of Asheville would have required a traffic study for it as part of the approval process. The county doesn't for some reason, and we've contacted the DOT to ask for one. The city of Asheville would have required the developer to meet with residents. The county doesn't. This piece of property is surrounded by the city of Asheville, but yet the development rules for it are much less strict simply because it's in the county. For those of us who live in this, excuse me, for those of us who live on the border of the city and the county, this situation is a perfect example of how the county and the city need to be coordinating their development policies for land on the borders. And we hope this experience, and we know many of you have received a lot of emails, Commissioner Belcher and Presley in particular, we hope this experience will jumpstart that coordination. So I appreciate your time, I appreciate your patience, we hope to see you next Wednesday, September 13th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Coontz Intermediate for the Town Hall. Thank you all.
Thank you.
My name is Carter Webb. I appreciate you guys taking my comments, and just let me know when the 30 seconds or minutes are up. I live on Westridge Drive, I'm going to speak to the same type of development that we're talking about. Westridge is just off of Overlook Road in South Asheville. As Vijay was talking about, the development of 98 homes on 25 acres is what I'm here to talk about. But more specifically, I mean, you've heard of the problems with traffic that this is going to cause, you've had problems with the massive amounts of dirt that the grading is going to take place with causing water runoff. But like I said, I'm here today to discuss my concerns with the proposal to match up to Westridge Drive, which is, Westridge starts at Overlook Road and then goes to Springside Drive. So a lot of people use Westridge Drive as a cut-through. The speed limit on my road, where I live on Westridge, is 25 miles per hour, but many cut through the road to get through Springside. Recently, the city of Asheville approved a traffic calming measure project on Westridge Drive to install eight speed humps on the road. So there's obviously a concern with the speeding problems on Westridge. The proposal for the development, it matches it up with Westridge, which will increase the traffic. I've got two children, and because of the problems with the speeding on the road, I hesitate to allow my children to play on Westridge Drive without adult supervision. I'm also concerned every time I back out of the driveway for getting hit because I'm right around the curve on Westridge Drive. The Overlook project will cause a significant increase in traffic on my road if the proposal moves forward. Also, along the construction of this project, during the construction of this project, I anticipate that many trucks will use the road to avoid the traffic on Overlook, the trucks that are doing the development, whether they're grading or whatever they're doing. A group of us met with the developer last week, and I expressed these concerns directly to him. I suggested he make it so the residents that come out of his development are forced to either turn right or left onto Overlook, and they can't go straight. He assured me that he heard me, and I'm not sure what that means, but I really think as elected officials, you need to take a look at this closely. The changes that they're proposing will have damaging effects on the area for generations to come. As Vijay mentioned, we have a town hall meeting next Wednesday, September 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at Coontz Intermediate, and I would strongly encourage you guys to attend. I really appreciate the time to express my concerns, and appreciate, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Rice, and anyone else? All right, Mr. Rice, you'll be the final one to give us some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Glad you got to see me. Come on, smile, I mean, good gosh, break it down, you know? These folks would like to see you smile once in a while. You spend their money, you ought to smile a lot, you know?
This is my excited look, Jerry, right?
There you go, Joe. Got to pick on the DA tonight and the sheriff, you know, that's two guys I want to pick on. Judges, they all right. Anyway, on this article you're going to be voting on, right? On the DA?
We are.
Okay. The money that you're talking about tonight, over the years, you know, it's been kind of a slush fund, so to speak, or it's getting to be a slush fund, maybe I would say. I'd like to know, first of all, do you have the authority yourself to be doing this, or is that at the discretion of somebody other than the Commissioners regarding this money? Who is responsible? The way that I read what the DA's wrote up, it certainly don't look to me that it's going to be his only, or someone's only. Looks like the county and the DA is going to be in on this money. Now, if you take it out of the commissary money of the inmates, where are you going to replace that money in your other part of the budgets for the county? Where are you going to come up with that? Because if you take it out of one fund, this much money, you're going to have to replace it somewhere else. So I'd like to know where this money is going to be taken out of. I think there needs to be a little more explanation on the history of this money and what it's designated for, and also how it's to be used, and have there been a policy in the past that's specific, or is this politics at work? So I imagine it's all encompassed. But anyway, I think I'd like to see some clarification on this for voting on whose authority it is and whose money it is. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We will take public comment on that issue when we come back up to it. I'll ask Mr. Rice not to comment on it again, since we've heard his thoughts, we've heard his thoughts on it. I'm sorry, what? Yes, I did. Yes, I did. I actually did specifically say that, so. All right. Consent agenda. Are there any questions on any items on the consent agenda, or is there a motion to approve? There's a motion and a second, further discussion. All in favor? Please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you, it is approved. All right. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation of Ralph Louis Day in Buncombe County, and Commissioner Belcher asked us to have this on the agenda, and I'm really glad that you did. And we've got a proclamation that Commissioner Presley's going to present. I know we have a lot of members of the family who are here with us, so Commissioner Presley, I'd like to ask you to come forward on our behalf and present the proclamation. I'd like to ask friends and family who are with us to please join Commissioner Presley at the podium. And I'd also just like to say that, you know, I know I'm just one of thousands of people in Buncombe County who were really touched by life and the musical gifts, and I was honored to have the Sons of Ralph play at my, the party we had the evening before my wedding, and it was really a special part of that, and I know just you guys touched so many lives, so I'm really honored to have you with us this evening, and appreciate Commissioner Presley presenting this proclamation.
Wow, this is great. My old school teacher. Not old school teacher, my young one. A classmate? The county abonked proclamation for Ralph Louis Day. Whereas Ralph Lewis was born on April 25th, 1928, in Madison County, and raised as a musical family where he picked up the mandolin and the guitar at an early age, and began traveling with his brothers playing music. Whereas Ralph Lewis was not born in Asheville, but settled here after the military service, and started the Lewis Refrigeration Company based in Canler. Whereas Ralph led his own band before serving in the U.S. Navy. Later, he'd become one of the Bluegrass Boys toward Europe, Japan, and the U.S., and appearing regular on the Grand Ole Opry. And whereas in his later years and up to his death, Ralph Lewis was one of the sons of Ralph playing with his sons Marty and Don. And whereas Ralph Lewis passed away August 5th, 2017, at the age of 89, leaving family and friends and the Bluegrass legacy that will never be forgotten. And whereas it is said that Ralph Lewis adapted to both the high lonesome sound, bluegrass and rhythm, rock and roll, and that of his music sounded as if it was carved out of the mountains themselves. And this Board wishes to honor the memory of Ralph Lewis and his legendary music career. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the county of Buncombe as follows: This is the Board does hereby honor the memory of Ralph Lewis by declaring April 25th as Ralph Louis Day in Buncombe County. That this proclamation be presented to the family of Ralph Lewis this 5th day of September 2017. The Board of Commissioners for the county of Buncombe, signed, Brownie Newman. Thank you.
We would also ask them to treat the audience to a tune tonight, and what's the name of it, Marty?
The Cold Mountain Waltz.
Cold Mountain Waltz, and this was written by Ralph, right? All right, awesome.
Thank you all for being with us and for sharing this treasured member of your family with us for all these years, and thank you for being with us tonight. All right. The next item on our agenda is a rezoning item on the Brad Howell property requesting zoning change from R1 to R3, and Debbie Trumpy will explain the rezoning request.
I found a pair of glasses up here, if anyone's left them.
Did someone leave a pair of glasses at the podium by chance?
Yes.
Oh, you did? They're yours?
Okay. Didn't want anybody to be blind. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Brad Howell has applied to rezone an approximately four-acre portion of tax lot pin 9667-462555 from R1 residential to R3 residential. The property is located to the north and east of 50 Hemp Hill Road. The subject property is part of a larger vacant tract with portions zoned R1, R3, and CS. The tract has frontage on Charlotte Highway, but is currently accessed from Hemp Hill Knoll Road. Of the two properties to the north of the subject, one is vacant and the other contains a manufactured home, and both are zoned R1. To the east, two properties are developed with single-family homes, and one is vacant, and all are zoned R1. The property to the south is vacant and is split-zoned, CS and R3. Properties to the west include a mix of single-family homes zoned R1 and R3. The applicant is seeking the rezoning in order to cluster future multifamily development within an area of the property that is part of a natural knoll with more moderate terrain. The planning department recommends approval of the proposed rezoning as it is consistent with comprehensive land use plan. The 2013 update suggests multifamily development to be within reasonable proximity to major transportation corridors, within combined water and sewer service areas, outside of flood hazard areas, and outside of high elevations. This property is located along Charlotte Highway, can be served by public water and sewer, and is adjacent to the R3 zoning district. The planning board held a public hearing on this application August 7th. 14 people spoke against the rezoning during public comment. The main concerns were access, density, visibility, traffic, landslide potential, and incompatibility with surrounding single-family development. The planning board found that the proposed map amendment is not consistent with the land use plan, is not reasonable nor in the public interest due to steep slopes, moderate hazard slope stability areas, and the surrounding single-family development, and recommended denial of the rezoning and a vote of seven to zero. And I'd be happy to take any questions now, if you have them.
All right. I don't see any questions at this point, so let's open the public hearing on this requested rezoning. I'll open the public hearing at 5:34. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? Yes, sir? Start with you. Yep, yes, sir.
My name is Ian McGarvey-Munn. I live on Cedarwood Estates. I'm a retired architect. I find the idea of four large buildings at the top of that hill to present a very ugly prospect. This is what I believe was proposed. When the builder or developer that was present saw the number of people that were against the project, he posed a threatened, he threatened to, he said, "I can cut all the trees on all that property, and you can do nothing about it." I was shocked by this statement, and I would be very reticent to give this builder permission to do anything on that space. I think it is well-adapted to R1. It will leave a lot of trees and will not be very visible, but if you start cutting a lot of trees and building large condominiums, it's... But if you start cutting a lot of trees and building large condominiums, it's going to be not only visible from the parkway, but visible from a lot of access roads and will not be in keeping with the surrounding environment. Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir, and then you can go next.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Dotson. My wife Lorraine and I live at 34 Hemp Hill Knoll Road, which is the property which borders the lower western boundary of the subject property all the way down to Charlotte Highway. I wanted to reiterate that the Planning and Development Board unanimously rejected this proposal, and we had approximately 20 residents from Cedarwood and from the Hemp Hill Cove community that attended, as mentioned a minute ago, 14 spoke in opposition. Hemp Hill Cove is an established community of single-family residences, and we oppose the encroachment of multifamily housing into this established neighborhood. Homes such as the log cabin that my wife and I live in date back to the 1950s and 1930s, and this is an established neighborhood. The, there is not adequate access to the subject property to support anything other than single-family residency. There's a Hemp Hill Knoll Road that our property, access to our property and beyond us to this property and three other log cabins is in disrepair. The maintenance of that is responsible for the members of that particular neighborhood and would not support traffic sufficient for developing a multi, multifamily housing and then subsequent use thereof. The only other access is, would be, well, also one thing I want to mention is that Hemp Hill Knoll Road through our property is a single-lane gravel road on a, building a ledge. So again, there's not an adequate two-way road to support a large number of cars going up and down through that neighborhood. Also, there is insufficient right-of-way between our property and Ms. Hargree's property to enable an adequate right-of-way from Charlotte Highway to the subject property if the developer so chose to go that way. So we, again, we oppose the rezoning of this property. Thank you very much.
All right.
And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to the Board tonight. My name is Patrick Gallagher. I'm the current president of the Cedarwood Estates Homeowners Association. First of all, I'd like, there's a number of people here that are opposed to the rezoning from R1 to R3, and I'd like them to stand, please. Thank you. And these are more than just Cedarwood residents. These are people in the general neighborhood. I've lived in Cedarwood Estates since 1993, nearly 25 years, and I am a licensed general contractor. I've built and lived in three different homes in Cedarwood Estates. Something that came up in the planning board meeting was, is that property visible from the Blue Ridge Parkway? The photograph you have was actually taken from the Blue Ridge Parkway Visitor Center. The knoll is dead center in that picture, and this is with the leaves on the trees, clearly visible right in front of the Blue Ridge Parkway Visitor Center. So whatever's built on top of that knoll will be there in all its glory to every visitor to that visitor center. The second page is actually a Google map, which shows the line of sight from the visitor center across the Blue Ridge Parkway. The yellow arc line is the Blue Ridge Parkway. It's also visible from the Blue Ridge Parkway, especially during the winter when the leaves are off of the trees. And that's about a two-tenths of a mile distance, so I just wanted that to be clarified. Also, the stormwater management is a very significant concern. It's not a one-time event where you add a few drains and a couple of culverts. It requires a good plan, constant monitoring and maintenance, and continued financial funding to make sure it is maintained. Erosion and silt runoff is very dramatic and has very dramatic and negative effects on our streams and rivers, and to anybody who's downhill. A dense R3 development would mean a lot of rooftops and parking lots collecting and concentrating water and sending it downhill for somebody else to deal with. As stated, the subject property borders directly on the Cedarwood Estate Homeowners Association, a couple of our properties within that association. Our HOA covenants are very restrictive, require a very low impact to the environment. Our lots are all three-quarters to one acres. You are not allowed to remove any trees that are more than 15 feet away from the house. So essentially, the entire neighborhood is wooded and remains wooded. Even with that, the entire time I've been living in Cedarwood Estates, stormwater management is a constant concern and requires constant maintenance and funding. We also have very restrictive governance regarding, regulations regarding pets that must be on leashes, picking up, bagging, and disposing of pet waste, general cleanliness of the neighborhood, limiting of noise, barking, that includes barking dogs. These are the types of things that cross borders.
Your time's up.
Time's up, I'm sorry.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, thank you very much. My name is Mary Batte, and I live in Cedarwood Estates, and I have lived there since 1993, so I have a little bit of history. When we moved in, 74A was two-lane, and now it's four-lane. And the property that is to the south of this property that's being asked to get rezoned, the gentleman owned it, started clearing it, and without any thought to the terrain and the steepness of the terrain, which is exactly the same as this other property. And we had a major rainstorm and all that property ended up down in the middle of 74A. This is a major concern of mine, especially since there's homeowners that live in front of that, that if they start destabilizing that hill, it's going to end up in their backyards. So I do have a major concern. I really, really wish that you, hope that you will follow the direction of the planning board and reject this. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Keith Levi. I live at 12 Cedar Summit Road in Cedarwood. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, I wish to speak in objection to the rezoning proposal before you now. The implementation of zoning is a contract between government and residents of Buncombe County. In exchange for the loss of individual property rights, we can expect collective protection to reasonably see land develop in a predictable and transparent manner, to purchase and improve property with an expectation of development and uses deemed appropriate and likely. This rezoning request violates these expectations. However, property zoning doesn't have to be constant, there can be justifications for change in use. Perhaps the surrounding area has naturally evolved into new uses. That is not the case here. Neighboring properties Cedarwood and Hemp Hill are much as they were when zoning was approved, low-density, single-family residential. Maybe there are unique constraints to the land favoring rezoning. Again, not here. This property has limited access, is heavily wooded with steep slopes. Rather than indicating a need for rezoning for denser development, it indicates this property is most suitable for the approved zoning, low-family, single-family residential. Perhaps this land was purchased prior to zoning. Again, this is not the case here. The property transferred in December 2016 with full access to information on the current zoning, the allowable uses, and the topo restraints. A rezoning approval would destroy transparency. An R3 classification would run with the land, allowing this owner, or the next, or the next, to propose any use allowable within the new zoning, including multifamily, apartments, rooming houses, group homes, vacation rental complexes, and manufactured housing parks. I do not speak against the development of this property. In all honesty, I would prefer to see it remain as it has been, undisturbed woodland, but it is not my property, it belongs to others to develop. I only ask that it is developed within the standards of the current zoning, that the county honors its commitment to adjoining neighbors and residents, that the county upholds the intent of the R1 zoning district as stated in its land use ordinances. The R1 residential district is primarily intended to provide locations for single-family and two-family residential development. This district is further intended to protect existing subdivisions from encroachment from incompatible land use. If intended land use can be abandoned for simple speculation, then what is the point of zoning in the first place, and what protection does it truly offer? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'll ask that folks not applaud or otherwise comment on what other folks are commenting. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you for this evening. My name is John Adams, and I live in Cedarwood Estates. I just have a simple thing I'd like to point out to you. I think you all have a copy of this map available to you. From 74A to the top of the knoll is over 310 feet of elevation gain, and that's in less than a quarter of a mile, which works out to be an average of about 23% grade. That's an average. That's way too much for this property and for the water distribution that will come off of that property if it's cleared or if it's built upon. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, anybody else? Yes, sir, in the back, and then you can go next.
Good evening. My name is Chris Savsek. I live in Cedarwood Estates. My concerns with this are a little bit different than other people's. Just a little bit about me, I have been developing cities, states, and countries across the world, dealing with economic development. Now, the issue I have with this is that for Asheville, there are two major entities which allow for this city to grow and for Buncombe County as a whole to grow. These are the trees and the mountains. When you take these away, you will lose your tourists and you will lose the people who come here to retire. Now I ask how many of the people here today came to Asheville and saw the trees and the mountains and fell in love with the county as I did? Probably most of us here. Now, the problem with the land which has been proposed for development is that it's at the top of a small mountain. This is clearly visible from both Blue Ridge Parkway, the visitor center where every tourist goes, the intersection of I-40 and I-240 as well, which most tourists and the people who come here to be able to decide whether or not they would like to live here full-time will be tra-- will be going through. Now, this is going to be a major concern for basically every person who comes into the county. They will be seeing this and they will be thinking to themselves, "Do I want to come back here as a tourist?" If they are allowing this to be happening to this mountain, which I can see clearly visible, what is going to happen to the county that I love? What is going to happen to the future of the place which has been developed for tourism, for retirement, and for a beautiful lifestyle for most people? Now, I'm kind of surprised, actually, in that there are not many hoteliers, either hotel owners or operators here currently. I've worked with them, a number of them, across the world. Usually, they are at these kind of areas because they don't want to have their businesses impacted. All right? Now, I think you will see this, as this goes forward, with several hoteliers coming up and telling you they don't want their businesses impacted. Okay? As this is a major thoroughfare, every person coming into this area will see it. Now, I'm not against economic development, okay? I used to make my living off of that. But it needs to be proper economic development, which has been thought through, which the planner, or I'm sorry, the developer has no plan even right now. All right? Now, I thank you for your time this evening, and I strongly recommend that you vote no on this proposal.
Hello. My name's Matt Holcomb. I live at 12 Little Knob Road, and I didn't intend to come here and talk to anybody tonight, but I'm not from Cedarwood. They're up here, I'm down here at the bottom. The water is an issue, and it's all going right into the Swan and Oll, right into the French Broad, right to the River Arts, and that's valid. I see that. At the same time, I've been here 10 years. We've owned our house in Asheville for 10 years, and we moved here because I used to love to drive into Asheville. And you've got Southern Appalachia, these rolling green hills, this beautiful lush landscape as you're coming in. And north of town and in other parts of town, you're starting to lose that. You're driving out of town on the highway and there's zillions of houses, condos, and stuff. And Fairview hasn't done that yet, and the parkway's right there, and you are driving out, and you still have this green just beauty coming down, and that's why people come here. And like I said, I didn't intend to say anything, but as we start talking, that's why I came here. I think that's the value here, and I don't think you should let that go for money, because I think that's what we're all about, and I think we need to preserve that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right, thank you. We're going to close the public hearing at 5:50.
I'd like to make a motion to deny the rezoning request because it's inconsistent with the land use plan.
Right, sir, a second. All right, there's motion and a second. Further discussion?
I do think, I need to ask a few questions in light of some of the things that's come up, sir. That might be, do we know the intent of the location of the project on the property?
The developer has said that they want to place the buildings up on the knoll, which is the less steep area, that portion that's up for rezoning, although as in any rezoning, they're not held to any particular development plan at this point, whatever is allowed in R3 would be allowed.
Okay. Do we know, do we have any information on the right-of-way for this, where it would come from?
They do have access off of Charlotte Highway. They would have access up Hemp Hill Knoll Road, although I don't know what the right-of-way is on that road.
Off of what road?
Hemp Hill Knoll. It comes winding up through that little neighborhood at the bottom.
Also, if they did build there, would you comment on stormwater and how the county handles that?
Well, they would have to submit a development plan for stormwater with the calculations on the amount of water, and it's required to be kept, the runoff is required to be at pre-development levels. So they would have to install stormwater controls in order to do any, a development up there.
Okay. Also, there was a comment regarding clearcutting that would, would the county allow that on that property?
Yes.
They would?
Mhm.
Could clearcut the entire property?
Yes, it's not in the steep slope or protected ridge overlay.
Okay, I'm actually going, I'm going to, what was your motion?
To deny this.
To deny it. I'm actually going to support the motion for, because the R1 has been there for a long time. And, you know, I understand people being surprised about that. I'm not, I'm not totally against the developing that, but this is not necessarily a really good site for that. But I do have, I think there's been people mentioning about, somebody owned that and somebody sold that. So we have to always take that into consideration when someone's asking for a rezoning. But you said the developer was out of Greensboro that purchased this property, is that correct?
I'm not sure where they're out of.
And they have an opportunity to come back to us in a year? Is that right, if they decide to change some other type of development?
If they change the application, that would be changing the area to be rezoning or the district that they're requesting. They could come back within a year. Otherwise, the same application couldn't come back for a year.
Okay, all right, thanks.
We have a motion and a second. We do. It was seconded by Commissioner Friar. Any other comments or questions?
I'd like, there's been a lot of people speaking. There's been a lot of people speaking, and one gentleman that spoke basically put it out pretty clear. He's not against building, and it's somebody else's property, but they bought the property as an R1. And, you know, if you do the single-family, but now you stepping into a different realm. The gentleman supposedly bought it in December. Here it's not even a year, but look how many people showed up tonight that are against it. I'd like to know where the developer's at, that wants to do this, and for that reason's why I second this motion to deny it. Thanks.
All right. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed to the motion? Motion passes seven to zero. All right. The next item on our agenda is a text amendment, Chapter seventy-eight, Jesse Gardner, and Debbie Trumpy will also explain this request.
Jesse Gardner applied to amend Section seventy-eight dash six forty-one A, the permitted use table, to add travel trailers no more than a hundred and eighty days a year as a permitted use, and to add travel trailer parks as a permitted with special requirements use within the PS Public Service zoning district. The Planning Department recommends approval of the proposed amendment as it is consistent with Section seventy-eight six forty, Statement of District Intent of the Zoning Ordinance, which states the Public Service District is intended to be a district that includes, but is not limited to, governmentally-owned properties, schools and large college properties, recreation parks and facilities, emergency services, and community clubs. The Planning Department also recommends approval of the proposed text amendment as it is consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. The 2013 update indicates that temporary dwellings should be allowed in rural jurisdictions and in areas that allow for public recreational uses of property. The 2013 update indicates the following objectives: the establishment of land use regulations which allow for a flexible range of development options, and the expansion of existing land use policies and regulations to adjust for changes in land use patterns and demands. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this amendment August the seventh. No one spoke during public comment. The Planning Board found that the proposed map amendment is consistent with the land use plan, is reasonable, and in the public interest, and recommended approval of the amendment in a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. If there are no initial questions, I'm going to open up the public hearing at five fifty-eight. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak during the hearing? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at five fifty-nine.
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The next item is text amendment, Chapter seventy. Debbie Trumpy?
Mr. Chairman, do I need to go back, excuse me, do I need to go back and restate my motion and put the language in that we're supposed to?
Oh, yes, please. I'm sorry.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve this, finding that the request is consistent with the County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, reasonable, and in the public interest.
Is that clarification?
That was... Yeah.
Let's just revote on it. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. All right. Ms. Trumpy?
Yes, I do not want to connect to you.
We assumed that you meant all of that the first time.
If we can read each other's voices.
Okay. All right.
Staff initiated an amendment to Chapter seventy, the Buncombe County Land Development and Subdivision Ordinance, to revise the definition of subdivision in Section seventy-five in order to clarify the types of subdivisions that are exempt from the subdivision ordinance. A revision is needed because the General Assembly in session law twenty seventeen dash ten added two types of subdivisions which are exempt from subdivision regulation. Also, a clarification for subdivisions of lots over ten acres is added to make clear that the subdivision is exempt only when all of the lots are over ten acres. The additional type of subdivisions that are now exempt from subdivision regulation are the division of a tract according to the terms of a probated will or intestate succession, the division of a tract in single ownership that meets these additional standards. A plat must be recorded. The division cannot be a portion of an exempt subdivision of ten-acre lots. The tract cannot be subdivided under this exemption in the previous ten years. The tract is greater than five acres, and after division is no more than three lots. The lots meet land use and zoning regulations, and a permanent means of ingress and egress is recorded for each lot. The Planning Board held a public hearing on the amendment on August the seventh. No one spoke during public comment. The Planning Board recommended approval of the amendment in a vote of seven to zero.
I'm going to open the public hearing at six oh-two. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing at six oh-three. Is there a discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it, finding that the request is consistent with the County Comprehensive Land Use Plan, reasonable, and in the public interest.
Further discussion?
I do have one thing I want to mention that was, that's in here, which I think is particularly good, is the division of tract into parcels in accordance with terms of probated will. That's a new addition in there, correct?
It is.
So that reduces some of the impact on families, which I thought that was... There were some other things in there I liked, but I particularly liked that, so that's it for me.
All right. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Debbie. Okay. We decided we would move the solar farm item next on the agenda, so Mr. Creighton, I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, I'd like to talk to you all tonight about the possibility of putting the solar farm on the old abandoned landfill down in Woodton. We've gone through the process of putting out a RFP, and I just want to talk to you a little bit about it. As everybody knows, the land is located down on Highway two fifty-one in Woodton, right next to the training facility. Next. What we really wanted to do is we want to have somebody to come in that could develop it, finance it, bond the project, and then basically come in and do the connection distribution study, run the system, and do any kind of maintenance on it over the life of the lease, and also do ground maintenance. So we went through, and we estimated that there's around thirty acres usable flat land. Now, let me remind you that this is an abandoned landfill, so none of these panels can be actually set down into the ground. They're going to have to sit basically on a cast concrete block, simply because, like say, we can't let any penetration go into the top of the cap of the existing landfill. We're estimating around four megawatts. I think what the chosen company will have to do is, one, is that they'll need to come in and determine exactly how much of the area is usable, the size of the system that will be, you know, capable, whether it's thirty acres, twenty acres, or forty acres. Then they've got to look at the distribution center, system. We have three-phase power that comes up past the landfill. The closest substation is on the south end of the MSD Metropolitan Sewer Treatment Plant. So they're going to have to determine, okay, are those lines big enough to carry the amount of power that can be generated from this site? But also, as important, can that substation handle that additional power that will be coming to it? So study's going to have to be done before Duke Energy will accept, get in the queue to start that whole process to determine if they'll accept the power. And then we're going to, we're looking for somebody to lease the property, and what will they, what will they give us for that lease? Next. So what we did, we started out in early June and did an RFP, distributed. We had about six different companies inquire about it over the two-month process. What we actually did, we had three companies that submitted a proposal, and we did interviews in middle of August, and I'm here tonight to make a recommendation on who we'd like to have come in and do the study and develop, hopefully develop, the solar farm. Three companies that we had was Hannah Solar, Amero Resco, and Duke Energy. The, as you can see, that they, the next slide there, please. As you can see, everybody really recommended the estimates that it's somewhere about three megawatts to six megawatts. That will have to be determined as the study comes about and they actually get on the ground and do the survey and look at the distribution center and the substation. The S-Rexes, which is a solar energy credit, for every thousand kilowatt-hours produced or energy produced, there's an S-Rex, a solar credit. And you can sell those. That market right now is very, very flat, but, you know, for the life of this, you never can tell. Twenty years down the road, ten years down the road, that market, it really depends on what Congress does and how attractive they make those Rexes. We sold Rexes at our current landfill with a gas generator down there, so. And the lease, basically Hannah said that they would give us a twenty-year lease, five hundred dollars an acre that is usable with a one percent annual escalator. Amero Resco basically would not give us a lease cost at this point. There's a House bill that just got passed, five fifty-nine, and they were, they really wanted to study that bill more. And then Duke Energy came in and said that they'd give us a twenty-five-year lease, seven hundred dollars an acre, and also that they would extend for three additional five-year periods. So, and they would, and Duke would also come back and let us do the maintenance and reimburse us for that maintenance. So given that in staff's mind, Duke Energy made the best proposal, obviously seven hundred dollars an acre, the life of that lease being up to forty years, and then letting us do the maintenance and they reimburse us, I think was attractive to me because, one, we're currently doing maintenance and mowing at the old landfill. But if there's a problem with abandoned landfill, we want to jump on it right away. We don't want that problem to escalate into something more serious. So tonight, I'd like to propose that we allow staff, or you allow staff, to go ahead and start negotiating with Duke Energy to do a solar farm at the old Woodton landfill. If you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, John.
When did we look at this first? May?
Sounds right. Spring.
It was in the springtime.
We decided to send it out. All right. Thanks.
All right. Any questions or a motion from the commissioners?
To accept Duke Power.
I'll second that.
All right. There's a motion and a second. I will take public comment on this, on the motion. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My question on Duke, they're the big dog on the block. We know that they know more statistics than these other two, and I just wonder if the other two has had the opportunity to know what could handle the wattage that they're talking about putting out? And if they don't, is it an unfair advantage for Duke to have this knowledge and they don't have it? Because the megawatts, you notice, goes from six-something down to they want them for. Sure, they can give more money. They can give a better plan because they got all the money. So I think they have some data edge that might not be given to these other two to make a fair shot at this. I don't know if those questions have been answered or not, but I think that it needs to be investigated and looked at before you make a Duke thing on this proposal. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other folks who'd like to speak? All right. Thank you. So, John, you want to just talk us through the RFP process? Like, how did that work in terms of the information that folks had about the property and our interest in doing the project? Did anybody have more information than anybody else about the property that, where the project would be located?
I mean, honestly, in this day and time, you can Google anything, you can pull up Topos. You know, I think the key is that the other two companies besides Duke are big, are big solar companies. I mean, they do, they do a lot of business. Hannah had done nineteen projects in North Carolina itself, so, I mean, they're good size. So they know the market, they know what they're willing to pay or not. And, you know, some of these, we learned, have investors, and what they do is basically develop it, and then they sell it off. And I think it's more important to us to try to keep, you know, the same vendor for the long term of the lease. You know, I think it's in our best interest. If Duke wants to pay us two hundred dollars more an acre, I think that's great.
Okay. Thanks. Other questions or comments from the board?
I've got a couple of comments. One is I'm glad the board took the time to put the RFPs out, you know, for transparency. And I also am supportive of Duke Power doing this. Should we have a problem, should there be an issue, should there be disposal of any of this, then we'll, you know, we've got a major player that actually was able to come through with the bid, so I'm very supportive of it.
Great. Any other comments? I'll just say, I think it was a good process. I'm always eager to get these things going, but I think it was the right thing to do to go through this process. And so we appreciate all the companies who put proposals forward, and I am, but I'm supportive of the motion. So, yes, Mr. Presley, go ahead.
I was going to say, I'm in support of it. I know that I voted no last time, and I'm glad we went through the routine to do it right, and that's why I'm going to support it now.
All right. Great.
One other, if I don't lose my thought. About man, you lose my thought. When the land, when, okay, when they out, say the solar panels go down, is Duke going to be the disposer of the solar panels?
They will make sure that's in the contract without a doubt.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll just add that I was also one of the commissioners who voted no earlier, and that was driven by wanting to see us go through this process. I'm very glad we have, and I feel like it sets a great standard for us moving forward to just do that kind of due diligence on any major project like this. So thank you all, and thank you, county staff especially, for taking the time to do this and the various companies that bid on it. I'm excited to vote in favor of the motion this evening.
All right. Great. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you, John. Okay. The next item on our agenda is the update on the African-American History Lunch and Learn series, and Kenyon Lake is going to present this item for us. Thank you for being with us.
So, good evening to our commissioners and our chairman. My name is Kenyon Lake. For those who don't know me, I am a part of the Community Engagement Team here at Buncombe County Health and Human Services, or the Buncombe County itself. And I am going to talk to you about the African-American historic events that we've been having. First of all, let me give you a little bit of background of how we come to this. So back in April, we had Mia Sommer, who came down and shared with us, and during that meeting, it was disclosed, it was shared at that time, that we would like to have more information, particularly and primarily for the black community, the African-American community. So that's when we decided to start having these lunch and learn events that started taking place about three months ago. What you have before you is actually illustrations from a graphic illustrator that we hired What you have before you is actually illustrations from a graphic illustrator that we hired. Her name is Karen, and it talks about the first three, um, events that we had. So the first event that we had was given by Mr. Marcel Proctor. That actually, um, talked about the redlining, the gentrification, gentrification that's taking place right now in Asheville, and also, um, geodistricting. So, um, that was done in June. In July, we had Dr. Waters, who talked about education and history, primarily around the African-American community. And last month, last August, we had our very own Commissioner Al Whiteside talk about our, um, wage, uh, edge, our wage gap and our, um, economic disparities. The beauty about these events that's been taking place have been not only the, the service that they call as far as the people who they're servicing, meaning that they're not just serving African-American folks. They're serving a variety of people coming from all walks of life, different backgrounds, who all have a common interest in seeing our entire community grow. With that being said, the events are taking place at Stevens Lee, which is one of the historic sites for not only the African-American community, but the community of Asheville as a whole. We do know that that is the, the historic school, or Stevens Lee High School. Um, these events take place during lunch around twelve o'clock, they usually end around one thirty-two o'clock. And with that, um, you know, again, the average number of folks that we're having at these events averages around a hundred and fifty people. So we see that the community is truly engaged, we see the information is greatly being shared, and we also see a vested interest in the community and moving forward on the topics that we are discussing here, um, that's laid out before you. What we have coming up this month, we have Dr. Sharon West, who's gonna be talking about health and health disparities amongst the African-American community as well, and that's gonna be on, uh, September the twenty-seventh. So I encourage everybody, if you have not attended one of these events, to please attend these events, see what's happening right here in Buckland County and the community, and see how we can, as a whole and as a county, push these things forward. Um, what we talk about as an engagement team is being able to engage in the community, being able to find what works in a particular community, and being able to galvanize the entire community. There has not been anything better, um, with the, with the exception of the work that we're doing as a team, than these lunch and learn events, because again, you have the entire community coming out, supporting these events. But being able to get together and say, okay, how can I help? How can I, you know, use my platform as a place to, you know, to, to make change? So again, I am elated to bring this to your attention if you do not know anything about it. Again, I would love to see you on the twenty-seventh. And also I'd like to thank the team that I have here with me, headed by Lisa Eby, but I would like to thank Rashida McDaniels and Rebecca Brothers, who's a part of the community engagement team as well. Any questions for me?
I just want to, um, thank you, uh, for this work. We know the numbers that we see from Dr. Bullard's work of the state of Black Asheville are horrific. And, but we also know we, we're in a community that cares. And the more we get the numbers out there, the more we talk about these things, um, the more we see a community that cares and we can move forward and make changes, and thank you for all the work.
Thank you.
Also, I, I want to thank you for, for the way that this is presented. An interesting thing about presenting it this way, I think most people learn like this, a lot of people do. If this would have been just listed, my eyes would have blurred, no matter what the subject matter. And this, this is, uh, this is well done. I, I keep searching out, you know, the different, uh, areas and trying to read it. So whoever come up with this, um...
Um, the person who did this, her name is Karen Hannah.
Pretty cool.
Um, these are actually life-size, so we had shrunk them down for the paper, but, um, actually Rebecca Brothers and Lisa Eby were the brain trust behind this idea to really bring this to the light, so they get all the credit for that. But, um, yeah, you know, I think again, I actually saw, saw you at one of our events, particularly when, uh, Commissioner Whiteside was there. But I do encourage all of our commissioners and our chairman to attend, um, these events. You really will see what's happening in the community. You'll see, again, a bunch of folks galvanizing to really, you know, bring truth to power.
Yeah, I had the, go ahead.
You.
Just, I wanted to say I had the chance to attend in August when Commissioner Whiteside's presented, and it was a really stimulating conversation, but the energy in the room was really palpable and, um, just want to thank you all for being out front and helping to change some of our public conversations and create spaces for really important gatherings like this. So I'm hoping to come in September, hope to see others there.
Kenon, I'd like to thank you and Lisa and the whole team. And what I think was most, uh, beneficial to me in this, you know, I've attended a lot of these in the past, and let's face it, they were nothing but pity parties. You know, we talked about how bad the numbers are and whatever. But with this, it was positive, because we talked about, we need to start to correct the problem. And, you know, until you recognize the problems are here, that's fine, but we need to go forward in correcting these problems. And if you never start, you don't get there. And that's what I like about this.
Commissioner Whiteside, I think you're exactly right. What's been happening is, with our team, has been exactly what you're saying. Well, not only are we having the conversations, but we're getting people at the table who want to do something about it, who want to, you know, bring whatever expertise they may have, again, to kind of, you know, be a solution to the problems that we're facing. So I think these are really, so what we're gonna be doing, I think the last one that we plan to have is, is actually this September. Um, is, uh, Dr. West will be the last one, and then we're gonna reevaluate and see, you know, where do we go from there. Personally, I think this has been a, a, a dream come true, is a blessing as far as reaching people and being able to get the information out. If there's no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being with us. All right, the next item is also Lisa Eby's on this one too. She'll give us an update on the tipping point grants.
So the tipping grant, point grants actually follow up very nicely. Can I have the PowerPoint, please, Cassie, um, on the work that Kenon and the team have been, have been doing with the, um, historical lunch and learns? Because the tipping point grants are another way that we as a community can actually do something about what we see in our community. The Lunch and Learn Series came out of Marcel Proctor saying, you can't go forward if you don't know your history. And so it was really about helping the youth, especially in our community, and those emerging leaders to really understand what had come before them so that they could do better going, um, um, forward, with the work that we're doing in our community. So that was the series, and then the tipping point grants, and that does not look right. I don't know what happened, but it did look good. So the tipping point grants, um, I, just to remind you guys, are, those, uh, came out of a two-year grant that we got called Mobilizing Action for Resilient Communities. And we were given a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a two-year period, a hundred and fifty thousand each year. And we were allowed to basically design whatever we wanted. And so pa- part of what happened after a lot of research is we decided to, um, go out in the community with these very small grants, up to a five thousand dollar limit, and say to people, what are you doing right now that's, that's working, that you're excited about? And can we help give a little lift or amplify that effort? And so, um, the initial tipping grants we sent out, I think you guys have heard me say this before, but we had over eighty applications that came in. And we, just as important about the, um, ones that were funded, were also the, just understanding better what people were doing in our community. It was just a beautiful map of efforts in our community. And so we're going forward again in this next fiscal year, and we're opening up these grants starting tomorrow. We'll send out a press release, we wanted to make sure that you all were aware of it. We've streamlined the process, we've tried to make it easier, again, for just ordinary citizens across this county, uh, in every nook and cranny, to come forward with ideas they might have about how they can build more resilient neighborhoods. And they're typi- they're purposely meant to be only up to five thousand dollars, so that we keep it to individuals. And these are people who have come together around something that really matters to them, that's really important to them, and that they're, uh, been able to galvanize their neighbors and they're working together. And so, uh, those will go out again tomorrow. We have, um, we have money in the, um, purpose for this. We're gonna go out and hope to, um, in the first round, uh, fund ten to twelve grants. And that's partially because we want the community engagement team to continue working with those individuals who are funded and, and we can provide support as they're doing that work. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any. We hope that the commissioners will get the word out to your constituents as well. This should be, these should be funded throughout the county. So I hope that, you know, you'll look around your community and see if there are people or individuals that you think might benefit from these grants, and make sure that they apply, and they're welcome to call me or any member of the community engagement team.
Thank you for the update, uh, any questions?
No, just thanks for a great team. You guys are awesome.
They've been hard, hard at it. We, you know, we were a little surprised when those, um, lunch and learns took off like they did, but delighted, so. Thank you so much for your support.
Thanks so much, guys, appreciate it. All right. The next item on our agenda is a consideration of a budget amendment regarding the community access portal. And then we have our district attorney and sheriff with us this evening. Uh, gentlemen, thank you for being with us. I also see Judge Calvin Hill with us, Judge, always great to have you with us. Thanks, everyone, for being here. And, um, turn it over to the DA and our sheriff to get us kicked off on this.
Good evening, commissioners, good to be here with you. Uh, I just want to kind of lighten the, the room a little bit. When Jerry said slush fund, that's actually the reason why we're in here tonight, is because there is a budgetary process for, for spending inmate commissary funds, which means every dime that's spent has to run through the county commissioners, and they have to approve that budget amendment so that money gets in there so we can spend it. Basically, when you look at inmate commissary funds, there's a North Carolina general statute, one sixty-two dash thirty-three, that gives sheriffs the ability to run inmate commissary in the jail. You go on a little further and you find in North Carolina Administrative Code fourteen J zero eight zero one, to where it directs the sheriff that they must have a commissary to make those items available for snacks, extra food items, hygiene items, and things for the inmates. Now, the rule of thumb about spending that money is it needs to go in some way, shape, or form to help benefit the inmates who are either maybe coming into custody or who are currently in custody. So if you look at some of that over the past couple of years, and I'd be glad to provide you guys with a detailed inventory, I think the county gets that, but we'd be glad to provide it for each of the commissioners. Uh, what you have things is like ABCCM chaplains, charter communications for their TV, mattresses, they have to be maintained on a three-inch foam mattress that must stay consistent at all times. Some commissary supplies, correctional behavioral health, steamer for detention kitchen, uh, RHA drug court and drug test. A lot of what this money has gone for is to fund diversionary courts, is to fund things. So as we start looking at inmate population, where there's the opportunity to move inmates out, put them in diversionary courts, but there's attachments such as drug testing and things that are required, such as in drug court, that, uh, we've funded those things to keep those programs viable and keep them moving forward. So tonight is not unlike, uh, those other expenditures that we come forward, except maybe some of the expense of it. Tonight's expenditure that we're talking about is ninety-seven thousand dollars. Now that is to move the program up to the initiation phase, to buy the devices, and we're talking about iPad devices for the DA's office. And I will let Rodney explain a little bit further, and Todd explain further as, as we go along into more detail about what all that, uh, what all that hopes to accomplish, and what all that hopes to do in moving information that will help us manage jail population. What I can tell you is the nine days that it's been up and running, it has actually impacted fifty-three inmates in the jail. A lot of times, we have to wait for a release order to come down from, from the, uh, minutes from court that day to come down through the clerk's office. And what's happening now is that information is moved very quickly from the DA's office. If, uh, days in custody are met and they're willing to let those folks go out on time served, what, whatnot the case, uh, that they can move those. So it's saving us days in custody already, whether it's full day, half day. One particular incident, we had a, uh, inmate who actually got a release on a particular charge that allowed us to move him into DOC custody, which saved an entire weekend, where we would have held on to that individual longer before being able to move them out. Uh, I'm gonna let the DA and, and the assistant DA speak a little bit more in detail about what the program is designed to do, and hopefully what we'll be able to get from the program. You know, we're scheduled to come to you in, in a few weeks and talk about jail expansion. So a lot of our thinking and a lot of the mind around this particular program is what can we do to, uh, avoid the immediacy of building a jail? What can we do to impact those jail numbers in a positive way, but not sacrifice public safety? And so far, this looks to be a good effort in moving forward. Now, the plan is, is to go ahead, uh, fund this thing, get it up and running. There are some continuing costs in connectivity with iPad device. So what we want to do is look at it a year in, be able to, uh, if the commissioners are so inclined, to bring them back a report so they can look and see what kind of days in custody and what kind of, uh, bang for the buck, so to speak, that we're getting out of, out of this expenditure. Do you, do the commissioners have any questions in particular about inmate welfare? Anything specifically that I can answer for you before I turn it over specifically about this program?
So, so, um, the intent of this is to get people out of, move people out of the jail sooner. Whether we thought it was the best idea or the worst idea, the statute says it doesn't matter. And the reason this is off the consent agenda is, the reason it was on the agenda is we're moving money, and that's why it's even, is that?
It does, and, and, uh, you know, I welcome the opportunity anytime to come over and talk with the commissioners about what takes place in our detention center. Uh, we have been, uh, ahead of the curve for many, many years and continue to be, and, and want to manage that, that inmate population fairly, effectively, safely. And actually, you know, with the programming, try to impact the lives that come through there in a very positive way. So when we get the opportunity to change trajectory for somebody coming through the detention center, we get the opportunity to do that. Several of you commissioners have, have come through and toured the facility and, and been able to observe some of the programming and the things that go on through our many partners like RHA. And, uh, so there's absolutely no problem coming and talking about what we do. Now, the one point I do want to make to you, it seems like a fair amount of money, and it absolutely is. Immate welfare generates a significant amount of money that we're always looking to turn into positive things that impact the inmates or the situation we have in the detention center. So the second part of the question, as far as, you know, how do you replace those funds? These are funds that are generated specifically from the inmate commissary that then turn around and have to be spent on the inmates in some way to impact their safety or the plant facility security without supplementing the budget. So, uh, you know, but other than that, it's very general. I actually got up and took a phone call from Eddie Caldwell, who was our executive director of the Sheriff's Association, just to touch base and make sure I had it right before I came tonight. And, uh, I, I think we're right on the, right on target with where we are, with what we're doing.
Sheriff, thanks for coming tonight. And, um, among other things, this feels like an opportunity for us to learn about a piece of the, uh, work that happens in the county we may not know a lot about. Is there a, a general annual number for how much ends up in the inmate welfare fund?
I can tell you right now, it's five hundred thousand dollars that's sitting there. So it's not an insignificant amount of money. So when you look at ninety-seven thousand dollars for something that may impact us and, and days saved in custody for folks who not, who do not present a public safety threat, uh, with evaluation, of course, going forward. I think you're gonna hear about a lot of other things that, that this program is, uh, or this, this particular portal will do as far as information to the public, and I'll save that for the DA. But as far as what puts it in the realm of, of inmate welfare expenditure is days saved in custody, and that's, that's what we're looking for out of the program. Anything else?
Thank you, Evan.
Yes, sir.
I, I had this pulled up because we've had a few things on the consent agenda that weren't too good, so. I had it pulled up, I've, I've listened to this issue, and I'm, I want to listen more to this issue, and I appreciate y'all coming forward with it.
Yes, sir, thank you for the opportunity.
Good evening, ladies, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, I want to express, you know, it's, it's great to be on the consent agenda, but it's also great to make a presentation. So I appreciate the opportunity to come forward and explain what we're trying to do. And the sheriff did steal some of my thunder. This thing has been active for, for nine days, nine business days, and, uh, there's my PowerPoint. And we have dismissed fifty-three folks, uh, who...
And we have dismissed 53 folks who are ineligible to be held in custody, basically. So these are folks that we agree that should not be in custody. And we're getting them out. We're getting them out faster than they've ever been released from jail through a tool called e-filing. It exists and it's not used, it's not implemented. So I have a rather bare bones PowerPoint here. It's not particularly flashy. When I was thinking about an analogy for this, I thought of the card catalog system. And what we have right now is we have a card catalog system of justice. We file paper. It goes in shucks. It goes from one part of the courthouse, the clerk's office, to the courtroom. It all gets refiled, it gets shuffled back around, it gets over to the jail. And the technology that's very frequently used to move someone in custody, out of custody, is a ballpoint pen and, you know, a court docket compared with a jail list to get someone out of custody. What we hope to do here is move to that period when we had, when we used to have libraries with card catalogs and computers where you could search the database. And now, as you know, along live the card catalog. The card catalog now is no longer manufactured. It's no longer a part of our libraries because, you know, the digital media is so efficient. Time is money when it comes to folks in custody. We understand that. We've discussed this numerous times with the Sheriff's Department and his Budget Director. We've laid this out and had the defense bar test it. We've had eighty-some people sign up to participate in this program. We think it's really going to speed things up. Over the last, over the summer, I have advocated for a number of different modifications to our law. Very excited that we're the last in the country to raise the age, the juvenile age, but we're excited to do that. We had the Terry Marzel incident, and I want to kind of pull back later in the presentation. Well, this is only nine, 10 slides here. But this is exactly the kind of case that I'm pointing to in regard to what the utility of this system would provide. And I'll kind of circle back around to that. This happened July 2nd, the Terry Marzel thing. If you recall, there were panic buttons on the overpass, over 240 on Haywood Street Bridge. And Mr. Marzel was riding his bike across the bridge and got taken into custody. There has been community discussion about the criminalization of homelessness. And this is something that, this is, again, this is directly in focus. This is our target in terms of what we have immediately been able to make a difference on in regard to the use of this portal and the e-filing technology. This is a big thing. This is really ancillary, but it impacts our office. We have to constantly think of new ways to stretch the limited resources that we have. Again, technology and the support from the county, should it come, through this funding vehicle, will be key in making amends to what happened down in Raleigh this past summer where the AG's office lost dozens of positions. And now, we have absolutely no experience filing appellate briefs in the DA's office. We don't have an appellate bureau. We don't have an appellate attorney. We have to get trained up on that. We're very likely going to be filing appellate briefs, and that involves transport down to Raleigh, an argument down there. So the legislature has not allocated any new training or position for that, and that's a new obligation. As you all know, we really appreciate the support on a number of fronts, both to assist victims and we're broadening the scope of justice. We're using what I consider our discretion to divert folks from contact with the criminal justice system increasingly. At least, that's my vision. That's what I want to do. And through the Juvenile Misdemeanor Diversion Program, Veterans Treatment Court, Drug Treatment Court, Family Justice Center, the Child Abstinence Center, Sobriety Treatment Court, and now the Justice Resource Advisory Committee, I think it is now. We have, you know, embraced collaboration with these various county components and very excitedly. So here's a summary page of what we're really trying to do. Rodney, will you go ahead and take the e-dismissal?
Sure. Good evening.
This is Rodney Hacey. This is my chief assistant.
Good evening. The e-filing statute in North Carolina is 15A-101.1. Nobody that we know of is using it. It's been in existence for two years at least. It started with the effort to get all of the warrants, the arrest warrants electronic. And so they passed a law making an electronic repository for that. They then passed this law that said, hey, what applies to warrants applies to any document that gets filed in a court, you know, that gets filed in court if you meet these certain qualifications. So what we did was we designed the forms to meet those qualifications. Since they meet the qualifications, they then count as an electronic document. And then when it counts as an electronic document, that means that it can be filed electronically, which means that it's effective as soon as it is transmitted to the clerk. And we can send a simultaneous, identical, timestamped copy to the jail at the exact same time. And it is filed as of that moment. The jail can then rely on that document and let the person out. And that is just, you know, again, one of the things that e-filing will let us do. It applies to other things as well, like continuing administrative court cases and a lot of the other areas.
And so going back to the slide with Terry Marzel, late in the afternoon, he was taken downtown and he was booked. And Channel 13 happened to be, you know, on that exit ramp or on-ramp, filmed an incident where APD, you know, perhaps used more force than was necessary, arguably used more force than was necessary, took him into custody, brought him back downtown. That was televised. And I think before the close of business, the next day, there was a GoFundMe campaign. At minimum, there were folks that were concerned about Mr. Marzel who had raised funds to bond him out. But if we had received word that the only reason why Mr. Marzel was arrested was to remove him from the bridge because they thought that that device on the side of the bridge was a potential explosive device, and they were concerned about his safety, with that knowledge, we could have filed a dismissal remotely. It would have gone to the jail. Mr. Marzel would have been out. From what I understand now, there's potential civil litigation and other things that may impact the city. The wheels of justice grind slowly. We want to speed them up. So the e-dismissal program will do a lot to address that gap in time between the close of business at the end of the day and the beginning of business the next day, or Friday at 5:00 and Monday morning. We've dismissed 53 folks who are generally, I mean, they're, I mean, we're talking about charges that are intoxicated and disruptive or second-degree trespass, or which is basically, again, arrested for being homeless, misdemeanor breaking entering, and then somebody finding a place to take shelter out of the rain, essentially.
Yeah. And very quickly, I have copies of all the dismissals. If you want me to just hand them up so you can just, if you have any desire to look at them at all, you know, it shows how the electronic signature is reproduced on it. It shows how it's date and time stamped. Basically, we use a submission form on these devices to enter the information, and then it creates this document and time stamps it and then attaches it to an email and then emails it to the clerk and wherever else we want to. It also emails it anywhere we want to in our office, which helps us automate a ton of things, like when attorneys request that someone who is in custody, like on an HRI felony plea, this allows us to automate that and set up a process where they can use a form. It goes directly to us, and then it allows us to direct that through our process so that we can get it pled that much sooner.
Well, I see that you've zeroed me out on the PowerPoint, and so I don't know how long. I get going sometimes and I don't realize how much time we've, okay, do it. I mean, I'll try to be brief, but the e-dismissal thing is-
You've got to put drawings on there.
Yeah, I need to sharpen it up a little bit. It's when you have me on the consent agenda, then I'm off, and then I'm back on, and then, you know, it's like maybe another meeting. It's hard, you know. I'm sorry. But the e-dismissal thing is the first step, and then we really want to drill down on the felony pleas. And, you know, this is just the start. We've only been doing this for nine days, and we hope to have, you know, many more results to talk about in the future. Oh, yeah, the cost sheet, these numbers come from the Sheriff's Budget Director, Sherry Powers. Total cost for housing an inmate for one day is $111. We're conservatively estimating that we're saving at least a half day for these 53 folks that we've dismissed on minor misdemeanor charges that they are not eligible to do custody time on. We are estimating that we've already saved the county, per this metric, $2,941 and change. And going forward, if we continue to produce at this level, about 10 months, the project would be effectively paid for using those metrics. And long run, we want to do, I mean, this is going to be, it's a community access portal. All those points of collaboration that we have, you know, Family Justice Center, we have victims, we interact with victims, we have essentially two phones at the front desk now. Right now, we want to provide a portal so that folks can communicate with our office with victim witness legal assistance and our ADAs in a much easier fashion. Paperless documents, expediting discovery. And ultimately, I know the sheriff is supportive and excited about this. We want to replace the paper subpoena process if that's at all possible. So there's a lot that we hope we can do with this. And replacing the paper subpoena process will keep law enforcement doing essentially what they're charged to do rather than serving paper. I think that's it. Any questions?
I have a question.
No, you go ahead.
Oh, okay. Two. One is, when you talk about the nine days and 53 people, you know, who were let out, how many days of jail time did that save us?
It's, a lot of it has to do with just the way that the information is processed. Right now, there's a misdemeanor in custody calendar, and that's what it's called. And they go over there early in the morning at like 7:00. They go through and they identify these minor misdemeanors, and they make a calendar. And what normally happens before this started is that that calendar would go into court. The people would be, the inmates would be brought to court. They would either plead for time served or we would dismiss them. And then at the end of the day, after court was over, at 5:00, you know, before 4:00 or 5:00, the clerk would make a copy of their minutes. And then they would physically deliver that copy of the minutes over to the jail, and then they would go down and then they would release the prisoners based on that. And so the savings comes in. They are emailing me the misdemeanor calendar every morning at 7:30. And I go through and for the cases that are appropriate, that we're talking about, you know, the class three misdemeanors, the minor offenses, I do the dismissals right then. They get generated, immediately sent to the clerk and the jail, and they are out within a half an hour. So as opposed to getting, they get out at 7:30 or 8:00 as opposed to between 5:00 and 8:00 that night. And if they hit a weekend, it could be 5:00 or 8:00 that night, and then it could be Monday before they are able to get out.
Those are meals saved. That's security officers that aren't looking after bodies that don't need to be there.
Another question I have, and maybe I misunderstood it. You said it costs $111 a day for inmate?
That's the number that the sheriff gives us.
And there are a number of different number, you know, I mean, that's the total cost.
Somebody told me 13 or 14 dollars. Now, who's right?
Yes, sir. It is, it's more complicated than even I understand, but they do have different designations. Like they have a, you know, how much it is to add an inmate to the current population. And then they have like a total cost, and so that's, the total cost calculation is $111.
Yeah, please.
When you're talking about 13 or 14 dollars, you're talking about just the things that were required to provide an inmate and just the overall, I guess you would call that maybe soft cost of what they're provided daily. When you get into that $111 figure, which is what we have to do to submit to the federal government for them to give us a rate of what they reimburse. You're talking about administrative charges. You're talking about, you're talking about the total operation of the jail that would incorporate not only those soft charges but all that facility cost to the administrative cost, which is a pretty complicated formula, but that's where you get your $111.
Sheriff, excuse me. We're just getting $100 a day for federal prisoners right now, so that means we're losing $11 a day on them.
Well, it depends on, so here's the thing, Commissioner Friar. If you've got, those hard costs are the same whether your jail is full or half-full. So those are things, if you look and you say you're losing that kind of money, not really. So when we're projecting that money out and we're getting a dollar figure for the federal government, which Mecklenburg County is somewhere around $200 now, they just renegotiated their contract. I believe that's correct. Is it not, Sherry? I think they just renegotiated from somewhere in the ballpark of about $200. You really don't lose that by housing. What you're doing is you're generating that revenue and you're making up for your administrative cost and the other continual costs within the jail. Did that answer?
Yeah, it's, it basically, you know, we budget each year what we think the jail's going around. You've got X amount of people in the jail, not people, but you have X amount of help already in the jail. So whether somebody in the jail or not is costing you X amount of dollars per day.
That's correct.
So that's the way I can understand it better than-
Right. It gets confusing when you start talking about what are the daily costs in the jail.
It changes the cost. It pulls it down some.
Correct.
So, thank you all again for being here. I think I've made it clear in the past, I'm all about diversion and not a new jail. So I appreciate any effort, and to me, it's not about the cost. If somebody's in the jail that doesn't need to be there, and this is a way to expedite that, then that's what we need to be doing. And again, even if I didn't think this was a good idea, by statute, you have the right to do this.
If I could, this is a unique opportunity for us to have a more robust conversation about these. And as we're thinking both short-term and longer-term questions, I guess my question is if someone doesn't need to be in the jail, why are they there in the first place? And what fix might exist to keep folks from getting to the jail in the first place?
There's a lot of things that can contribute to that, Commissioner. One of the things that we look at, I know that the District Attorney's Office is looking at, are low bonds. They are so low for much minor, for a very minor thing, but the bail bondsman won't touch them. And the person doesn't have the ability to have the cash to bail out. So that's one of the things that we're talking about. Sometimes they don't, you know, I think the number's still about 41% of the folks who pass through our detention center are on some sort of psychotropic medication. So you have a lot of mental health issues with the individuals going through. And then if you attach that dual diagnosis of substance abuse there, you get a lot of folks in that detention population that can't navigate themselves out, even though they're there on very minor charges. Now, that's only a percentage of what's there. You've got another larger percentage who have some very significant charges, so it is a public safety interest to keep them confined until they can get their court date. But as we move through this thing, we're really trying to separate the two. You're familiar with Dr. Creighton. He's doing a lot of work to try to help us look and see what we can do to really evaluate those bed spaces, who needs to be there by seriousness of charge, and what we can do to free those up with those folks who just kind of get caught in the system and have a hard time navigating themselves out.
And if I could, a lot of it does have to do as well with a legislative change a couple of years ago. Most of the crimes that we're talking about are ordinance violations, things that are by statute a class three misdemeanor, which is the lowest class of misdemeanor. The legislature changed the law a couple of years ago so that if you are a Level 1 or 2, which unless you're in that category that has the most prior convictions you can have, if you're short of that, the judge cannot give you an active sentence by law if you walked into court and pled guilty. So that's what's caused us to try to mobilize, to try to take care of these things because they still are misdemeanors, so they're allowed to be kept on a secure bond. But these were the cases that, because of the legislative change, that if they walked into court and pled guilty, the judge could not give them an active sentence. He would have to give them a fine in court.
So one of the questions I had, one of the things that I do like about the conversation is the education that it's providing to all of us. And, you know, I want to make sure I'm, I'm grateful that we have, you know, judges that I'm confident that in their ability to hold folks accountable in Mecklenburg County, I'm very grateful for that. And there's a balance of accountability and efficiency. And one of the things that I didn't know is, are all of these people appearing before a judge or not? Or the balance of them are not appearing before the judge or how?
The magistrate, the magistrates set those initial bonds. You know, and so that's- You know, and so that's, you know, it's a magistrate, it's a judicial figure, but their first appearance isn't until sometime later. And that's what, that's what this system is designed to alleviate. You know, the bond hearing process, the, you know, another judicial figure looking at that bond, short-circuits a lot of time.
And historically, on that misdemeanor calendar, before, even before the legislative change, we would routinely dismiss or, you know, or they would plead for time served or some minimal disposition, even before the legislative change.
But time served is a conviction. Do you understand that?
All right, other questions? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I don't think I understood, or if you answered Commissioner Whiteside's question, the hundred and eleven dollars a day, okay? And with a half-day, it's fifty-five dollars, correct? Then Commissioner Friar mentioned something there, there is so much cost in there. I know that it averages out in ten months, or it should be a payback if the next eight months or like the last nine days or whatever. That's, I think that's what's got me concerned right there.
I got you. I'm not sure if you're talking about the fixed cost when the DA calculated those. I'll be honest with you, I think money savings is really because of that discrepancy in how you account for what is a day in custody, what does that cost? I think right now, the best way to look at it is that's jail space, that's confinement space, that we know is the most expensive space to build in county construction. So when we're looking at doing things to smooth up processes, so you have somebody who's sitting there for an additional eight hours, an additional three days, as we had one individual over the weekend that could have been shipped out to DOC. Those are the kind of things that add up to when you're going to build a new jail, when you're going to have to, when you have to start giving up that federal inmate revenue because your spaces are filled with pre-trial folks awaiting trial here in Buncombe County. So I think that's a better way to configure it. And I said hard cost, I think the best way to look at it is fixed cost. Those are costs that you incur every day, whether you have three hundred people in the jail or six hundred people in the jail, and that's what comprises that hundred and eleven dollar figure.
But I just want to thank you all for everything. Thank you, Sherri.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. We are going to open this up to, I appreciate all the information. I do want to see if there's any other folks who would like to comment on the issue before us this evening, is there anybody else? All right, you can go, yes, ma'am, you can start.
Good evening. I'm Leanne Melton, I'm the chief public defender for Buncombe County. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to say that I am all for dismissals, and it seems like a lot of dismissals are happening electronically over the last nine days without any additional equipment. And that is happening without ninety-seven thousand dollars for iPads for the District Attorney's Office. I want to say I commend and applaud the District Attorney's Office for the website that they have created. It is, there are some very beneficial aspects to that website that have been created, and I want to give them a shout-out for that. But in this situation, I would ask the commission to consider whether or not the inmate commissary welfare fund is where this money or this funding should come from. Maybe if the county commission thinks it's appropriate, it should come from the general fund, but I would ask the commission to look what would not be funded from the inmate commissary fund if this ninety-seven thousand dollars is used in this way. And I don't know specifically what wouldn't be funded, but I know that in Durham County, they use the inmate welfare fund, which the inmate welfare fund in Durham County, I believe, only comes from the commissary, it doesn't come from the phone calls. I think we do that differently here in Buncombe County. They fund a GED program in their jail for sixteen and twenty-four-year-olds. They spend eighty-six thousand dollars out of the inmate welfare fund for that. As Sheriff Duncan, who I will say runs a very good jail, he has a very good staff and is very helpful in trying to work with getting individuals out of custody who should definitely be out of custody. Other things that Sheriff Duncan mentioned that are being funded by the inmate welfare fund includes mattresses, a minister from the ABCCM shelter, Drug Court receives funding from the inmate welfare fund. I would ask the commission to consider also other things that could reduce the inmate jail population significantly by investing more money from the inmate welfare fund in continuous alcohol monitoring funding for the indigent individuals who are currently in the Buncombe County jail who could not afford to do the continuous alcohol monitoring as a condition of their bond, leasing more electronic monitors for individuals, so more individuals who are staying in custody for very lengthy periods of time can be released from custody. Again, don't get me wrong, I am all for dismissals. They are happening without this additional ninety-seven thousand dollars in funding in this equipment. So I would ask the commission to consider that, and ask the commission to look into the utility of using this funding for this equipment before you make a decision in this matter. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll get Judge Hill, and then we'll come back, we'll get it to everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I didn't really come here to argue about whether this is an appropriate use of this money or not. And Sheriff Duncan, and Mr. Hasty, and Mr. Williams, and then lastly, Ms. Melton, have all made the point that I came to make as to why I did not join in requesting that you pay for computers for the judges. And that point being, according to all of their information, these fifty-three people that have been released have been released under our current conditions. I don't have a computer. The clerks did not join in this, they don't have computers, and these fifty-three people that we're talking about have been released under our current situation. So I'm not here to argue about whether this is an appropriate relief. My practice, since I became the chief district court judge, has been to come to the commissioners and make requests for money or for materials when I know and believe that they are going to move our court system forward substantially, and it's something that I need. So I didn't join in this request because I don't see where I need the equipment. And the clerk didn't join in it because I think likewise, he didn't see where he needed the equipment. Those fifty-three people that were affected have been affected under our current condition.
I'm Kathy Lamott, I'm a private, an attorney in private practice, I do only indigent-appointed work by choice, that's what I came to do. I went to law school really late in life, I have only been practicing a few years, but I love doing indigent defense. I want to say that I am a big fan of our sheriff, I deal with the jail a lot, all the time. I want to say I'm a big fan of our DA, Mr. Williams, I've supported him, and I have been, and I'm a big fan of Rodney Hasty, who, and I've worked really closely with him trying to help support this and bang on his website that he's been working on and trying to, you know, make sure it's good and ready to go. I've used it repeatedly since, it's in the last nine days, to file motions and do other things just to sort of, you know, get that worked out. So I'm fully supportive of this, and I believe that not just what Rodney's seeing, or what I'm seeing of what Rodney is saying about, excuse me, Mr. Hasty, is that it's not just those things that, I mean, I see beyond that, ways that this could really help our criminal justice system become more just. And I won't even go there for now, but I would like to echo Ms. Melton's concerns about where it's coming from. I have so many indigent clients who sit in this jail with nothing, they don't have any money for extra food, and they are hungry. Every single one of them says if they can't buy extra food from the commissary, they're hungry. If I, they, we have great RHA people, that's the, I don't even know what it stands for. Our RHA people are wonderful, and we need more services. I've got people right now waiting for RHA to come and deal with them because they can't. And I'm getting, I text people and say, can you come up with a plan for this person, or can you go see this person? And they say, we can't do any more emergency stuff, we've just been told we can't do any more emergency evaluations. And so we need, that's what we need, is actual services that provide for either mental health, substance abuse, certain, I don't need them to be coddled, but we do need to remember that some significant number of the people who are in custody are pre-trial, they haven't been convicted of anything, they're not being punished yet, it's not time to punish them yet. Okay? And so for those people to not get, we want them to get on their feet, to make better choices, to not end up in this situation, even with the presumption that this is what they did, you know, that they did what they're charged with, we need to give them as many opportunities as possible to take those steps forward. So I'm just going to echo the concerns that were expressed about using, this is a fifth of the budget, if I am, I mean, ninety-seven thousand out of five hundred thousand, that's about a fifth of the budget, I mean, a fifth of the pool of money. That's a big chunk that could, you know, that could fund another staff person that could do, I mean, I don't know how many staff people. Anyway, I'll leave it there. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Lamott. Mr. Rice, I'm not, you did comment on this item in the initial public comment, and I did state that if you comment, then you will not be allowed to comment a second time. Anybody else? All right, bring it back to the commission.
I'd like, yeah, I'd just like to take a moment to comment on this, and I also, before doing that, I'd like to get some guidance so we have total clarity about what we're being asked to vote on here, and a clear understanding of whether we're being asked to weigh in as a commission on the merits of the proposal. And then after that, I'd like to, once I have that information, I'd like to comment. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. What's before you is a budget amendment? Clearly, how those funds were expended is the decision of the sheriff, but he technically can't move that money without a budget amendment. So what's before you is a budget amendment? I would like to just make two other points, is we invest significantly in supportive services in the jail and diversion programs for our community, and this board made a decision in February to invest another five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will come online in October. So we are addressing many of the service needs that came up tonight. I'll also tell you that the sheriff mentioned he's coming to the, back to the commission to talk about jail space needs, and as a part of that, he's working with Dr. Lee Creighton and Rachel Nigard to bring forward other proposals about programs and services that could help us further diversion efforts. So of the things that Ms. Melton mentioned and Ms. Lamott, we'd really want to hear about those and see how, can we include those in those funding proposals?
Thank you for that clarification. I want to be really precise in how I phrase this, because there's a lot of really tremendous work happening at the jail, I had the opportunity to tour it, there's a lot of, to be applauded about the DA office's efforts to modernize and bring the technology they're using into the 21st century and create new efficiencies in how our systems work. And I understand the needle we're threading and the manner in which this has come before us, or recognize the authority of the sheriff to ultimately make the decision on this, but since we are having this discussion, the point I want to raise and the request I'd like to make of fellow commissioners, the point I'd like to raise is that, is whether there's a line we can clearly connect between the purpose of the inmate welfare fund and the purchase of iPads for the DA's office, and whether there might be other funding mechanisms available for the modernization going on in the DA's office so that these funds can be preserved for a purpose that is very specifically delineated. Folks who are in the jail in Buncombe County are also our constituents, and they often don't have a voice. And it seems to me that in the way our system works, this fund is one way to carve out resources dedicated in very clear, direct ways towards their immediate needs and well-being. So I, for instance, would be very open to considering other avenues for funding a proposal like this, I just am struggling to connect those dots, and on the basis of that, would like to request that rather than voting on this tonight, we take some more time to look at this as a commission and look at whether there might be some other opportunities. I don't know what the will of the board is on that, but I wanted to float that idea. And that's, based on what I know tonight, that would be my, that would be where I'd land.
And I agree with Jasmine on that.
And only thing I have to say is, this is a budget amendment, and I've asked the question a number of times, how do we get stuck with this? Because when the sheriff has the money, and that's in his prerogative, I understand, but then when the sheriff wants officers, he comes before us and we have to approve it. But then, the county manager, which beforehand, could go ahead and furnish vehicles to the sheriff's department without coming back before us. So I look at this money as basically something the sheriff has brought up. Me voting for what he's going to do with it, I can't do that, but I can probably vote that he has a discretion to do with the money. But I'm like them, I'd like to see for some way that we can see where this goes, see where did it come from? Who put the program together? You know, that's, I don't want to get into that, but here, we have something now that there's a program there, but how did this portal come about? Is it a state portal that everybody ties to, or, you know, that makes something work? I don't know. But the fact is, is I'm with Jasmine and Robert, I would like to just see this shoved until we can see exactly where it goes. I mean, I can't tell Van Duncan what to do with his money, I promise you that. And if this is what he wants to do with it, then I'd probably have to say yes, but if he'd just give us a few more days to look at it and be able to talk a little more about it.
Well, where would the funds come from other than the general fund? I mean, if people want to make a motion to fund this out of the general fund, well, but if you're not going to do that, let's don't pretend there's some other money laying under the couch somewhere. If we're not going to fund it through this, it's probably going to come out of the general fund. Right? So let's just, this is on the agenda tonight, so let's figure out if we think it's a good idea, let's support it, if this isn't the right way to fund it, let's discuss realistically what the alternatives are. Would be my suggestion. I think it's, I think it's a, I'm persuaded on the merits of it.
Well, I'm...
And I think that there's, I think there's a lot of benefits to the, by getting folks who don't need to be there out sooner, I think that creates a much better environment for the folks who are there. So I think there's a real public good, I think there's a good rationale for using these funds for this purpose, in my opinion. So I'm supportive of the proposal, but if there's not support for using these funds, let's talk about other ways to do it if people would prefer an alternative.
And I really don't mean to sound like a broken record, but this is a budget amendment. What makes me gratified is, we've been talking about jail diversion for a long time now, and I hear seven people really excited about exploring other ways in the future to, you know, the alcohol monitoring, all sorts of things. To me, nobody should be in jail just because they can't afford that device to monitor their alcohol. That's a separate subject. But what's before us is a budget amendment, we don't have control over what the sheriff does with his money, it's clear, and I think if we want to explore other options to improve jail diversion, then that, when we can have that a subject when the sheriff comes to us for other ideas for the jail. But for now, what's before us is a budget amendment, the statute says sheriff can do what he wants with his money, and as Brownie said, Chairman, that's what we have before us. And I think he's coming back in two weeks to, and I'm thrilled that everybody's concerned about jail diversion.
So, well, I like, I like the way you just put that, Ellen.
Thank you.
That Van can...
Can you say that again?
That we're voting on, Van, we're just voting on the money being moved, as far as I'm concerned. It's their money, what they do with it... It's their money, what they do with it, I'm just going to vote on, I will vote for the money being moved. But that's, that's the part that I just wanted to lay at, is we're going to vote on, what do you call it, Ms. Stone?
The budget amendment.
Budget amendment.
Budget amendment, right. And I'll just leave it laying there.
So any programs that we do in Buncombe County, we're pretty good about measuring them.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, and I would agree with my colleagues that this has been extremely educational for me and all three, you know, those that spoke so well, you know, it's just been very, very helpful to me. But this will be measured. This is a budget amendment. It was in consent agenda, that the sheriff has authority to do.
Yes.
The purpose of moving it forward was to have this discussion so that we could hear whatever, what everybody thought. The authority is still there to do that. If we want to do anything different, then we can certainly do that, you know, at a later, at a later time. But I would challenge everybody that's passionately been on both sides that, you know, we hold, that they hold us accountable and we hold them accountable to measure this, even though it's a small amount. But we, it's in general, as far as the size of the budget, that we, that we do that. The reason I made the motion for it is not to be on one side or the other of the discussion, is that it is a budget amendment that we move forward and that's why I made the motion.
And, you know, I agree with Ellen and what several others have said. I think it is a budget amendment and it's within the authority of the sheriff to recommend and to use those funds. But my question is, what I learned from this, and I would just like to throw it out, is information from me is, that's a lot of money to make off of our prisoners. And when I hear that they need additional food, well, I'm feeding them. I mean, you know, this brings up other questions that I have. But as far as, you know, this budget amendment is concerned, I will vote for it. But I do have some concerns when you start talking about five hundred thousand or more here off of prisoners. I don't know.
Do you have a comment, Commissioner Cross?
No, I'm good. I am.
Mr. Dois, should you give a comment?
Yes. So I just want to make sure procedurally that we're complying with the rules. I was looking at the Rule 12A2. I just want to make sure that we know what we're doing here. So it says, "After the budget ordinance has been adopted, all requests for new or additional funding or amendments of previous budget ordinances must be submitted to and reviewed by the county manager and acted upon in the discretion of the county manager." And then it said that, you know, that the county manager, any request or amendment may be added to the agenda at the county manager's discretion. So have we, has it been submitted to the county manager and she's added it to the agenda under that rule? I just want to make sure I'm not saying one way or the other.
It was submitted from the sheriff's office as a budget amendment and appeared on the consent agenda. And a commission requested it be moved up to allow the discussion, so yes to your questions.
Thank you.
I want to answer Commissioner Whiteside's questions because I don't, I don't want anybody going away tonight feeling that we're not feeding inmates or we're not engaging in a lot of other programs. Inmates by state law are required to get three meals a day, two of those have to be hot. I can provide you with a caloric intake because it's got to meet a certain caloric intake per day. A lot of people talk about they gain weight when they're in the jail and some people, and you know, some people's diets are way different than others. But it absolutely meets state standards about what's fed in the jail. I also wanted to put out there, we talked about electronic monitoring. Part of what this inmate money has gone for in the past is to provide those monitors. We do fund a fair amount of that and that is based on, and I think, I think Manager Stone can probably tell you, on the amount of monitors that are used, we don't overfund them. When we looked at it at a particular point in time, we were only using X amount of, and I'm, and I'm talking about monitoring bracelets. The alcohol monitoring's a different thing. But what I will tell you is there's not been a request that's come before me for inmate welfare that falls into that purview of what you can spend that money for, that I've not granted, quite frankly. And we've still got a fair amount of money in that fund. I think it needs to be spent for the benefit of the inmate and we'll continue that thinking moving forward.
Let me call the question.
So we do have a motion in a second. I mean, I think this is a very good discussion. So, but you know, and I guess I would just go back to, because it sounds like, what I'm hearing is everyone thinks there's a lot of merits to this. There's questions about, is this the right revenue source? Realistically, what would there be besides the general fund? To that, is there, is there anything, are there any other ideas that are, that people are aware of?
I'd like to just drill down a little bit. It's fantastic news that there's been fifty-three dismissals in the last nine days. That's happening without this project being implemented. And so I'd just like to drill down and understand that a little more clearly if possible in terms of if that level of impact's happening.
Would someone like to respond to that question? I think it's a good question.
There's, I'll try to be really brief. I was in the district attorney's office under the prior administration and I sort of supervised the district courts and things like that. I went into private practice and at the time I went into private practice, I had a list of like ten things that we were doing that were just really dumb to do it that way. I mean, honestly. Like involving paper, real-time transmissions, subpoenas that we deliver in stacks to police departments that don't even get them to the officers. When I went into private practice from that side, I saw added another ten things to my list. Just ways that we're just, that we're doing things that are just, don't make any sense and we're only doing it because we've done it that way for this long. And so that's what this originated in was, I actually, we actually started out spending our own money. I mean, you know, so that we could start developing this and this was a year ago. And there have been multiple phases where it just sort of like, it just sort of developed into something that would take care of eighteen out of those twenty problems on my list. And one of them certainly is the jail diversion part. But the other part is it ties into the Family Justice Center and has a special page for domestic violence victims. It has a special page for sexual offense violence victims. It has a section where we can continue administrative court cases to keep bodies out of the courtroom, which is one of the big problems. So I mean, that's the way it developed was that, you know, it just, from my perspective, supervision, I go from the Superior Court all the way down to that traffic court. And what he hired me to do was to keep everything moving. And so I've been doing that for a number of years now and I probably know more about the actual mechanical operation of the courts than just about anybody else. And that's what this was all based on. How can we look at this whole overall thing and eliminate these really wasteful things that we're doing and accomplish the same thing, but just do it spending a lot less resources?
There's multiple different benefits to this. You know, I have a laptop and I was somewhat fretful that I have to come over here and bring my laptop and try to connect it to display the PowerPoint with VGA cables because I don't have an HDMI port on my laptop. That's a first-world problem. But if we have this connectivity, we have a thousand people coming into the courthouse every day with traffic tickets. Right now, we pretty much ask people, have you ever had a ticket before? You know, and in our discretion, we might give a reduction or even a dismissal based on that answer. But with the wireless connection, we can actually run record checks. And before we do a reduction or dismissal, we can know who we're talking to. There's a public safety benefit to it. There's just a multifaceted, you know, the connectivity here is really going to advance. We're going from the card catalog system to a digital system.
Can I just ask a question though? Because I'm still just not sure you're, the question is, you say it's been so successful over the last two weeks, but you don't have the technology yet. So how has it been, how's it already happening if you don't have this yet is I think what we're not clear on. Okay, so you've got a few devices, but it's not-
Part of this process is that the sheriff agreed. Once we got far enough into the project, he bought us some, basically so we could test.
Okay, so you have a few devices now, but not the numbers that you would have if it's fully implemented.
Tell the commission, I designed them to be processed on these devices and I can process them just like that. I was in a meeting with law enforcement about a homicide case and I continued ten administrative court cases. I mean, it's literally that easy with these devices. We can also do it outside the courthouse. We can do it at home. We can do it standing in administrative court line beside somebody with a calendar and the CJ leads to look up the record and the form to do the reset of the dismissal. There is no way I would have been able to do those fifty-three dismissals if I didn't have one of the test devices.
So how many, how many do you have to help with?
Well, we have two old ones that we initially did the testing on. And then once we basically approved the final, you know, the package, the way that we wanted it to be, they bought, they bought two of the new ones that we are currently using.
Okay.
So we have two old ones that we're going to use for slots like for a visiting judge. Initially designated for that, but we have four total.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments before we vote?
I'm going to vote for the money and that's it. I'm voting it because the sheriff feels like he's comfortable. It's his money. What he does with it, that's up to him.
Okay.
But far as anything else, I won't vote for it.
There was a motion made by Commissioner Belcher. Who seconded the motion? Commissioner Whiteside. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight and for the discussion. It was a great discussion. And keep us posted on how it is working going forward. All right. The last items on our agenda this evening are the board appointments. So we have first up the Women's Commission. And the recommendation from the Women's Commission is to appoint Anya Rabiak for this position.
I'll nominate Anya.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Tourism Development Authority, Chip Craig, is eligible for a reappointment.
Nominate Chip Craig.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On the Land Conservation Advisory Board, Garrett Arts is the Riverlink representative proposed for replacing the spot that was held by Karen Crag Nolan.
Nominate Garrett Arts.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On the Farmland Advisory Board, there-
I'll nominate David Lee, David Snellson, Ed Bullock, and Terry Wells.
I'll second those. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and on the ABTEC Board of Trustees, Gary Roberts declined the appointment that we decided on at our previous meeting. So-
I'll nominate Keenan Lake.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor of Keenan Lake, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, thank you. A couple of announcements. On September nineteenth at 5:00 PM, we'll have the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners here in Room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. On September twenty-sixth, 12:30, there will be a commission workshop to discuss pre-K and early childhood education in the first-floor conference room at 200 College Street. We have a closed session to discuss two legal items under General Statute 143-31811A3. Since Kathy Hughes is not here this evening, the minutes of the closed session will be reported by our county manager, Mandy Stone. We need a motion to go into closed session.
Oh, moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We do not anticipate taking any action in closed session and nor do we anticipate taking any action when the commission comes back into open session. We plan to just adjourn the meeting at that time. Thank you.